Thank you.
Well, I think, well, let me do this official. Three thirty-four, well, that's not bad. We're gonna start at three thirty-four. The city council special finance committee meeting. And we have here Andrew, Bruce Trippier, Kevin Myers, and Martha Keever. And myself as council members. And then we have Joyce, Dan, and, and.
I'll let him in for you.
Yeah. And Kelly.
Yep.
So you probably have all that, right? Okay. You've got all the real names. So special finance committee was called and ordered by myself at three thirty-four. Twenty twenty budget, who wants to take this?
Well, I can kinda start and then Joyce, and then we're gonna kinda explain the route we're gonna take today. As Joyce has been going through this new software, and I'm probably the only one sitting here with a blue ledger anymore, but it's what I worked off of on the eight twenty file, and I got notes wrote in there, and then you've got the white sheets in front of you that are just the more critical areas in the departments that we wanna go over. And Jeff is gonna talk a little bit about where we were at overall, and Joyce can do that, I guess, just where we're at with the general fund and probably about two percent or one and a half over budget for this year over last year, roughly somewhere in that area. So Joyce, you can kinda look, kind of explain a little bit about what you're going through with the new software, and how that's gonna work for you, and what you'll have next week will be a little more detailed.
Right. The Green Bar that you used to get, I can do a similar report as, it's called an expense budget worksheet, that'll give you some history and that kinda thing. But what I have to do with this, I have to export this into Excel, which then just gives me a worksheet with a bunch of columns on it. Once I plug numbers in, which I'm going through line by line right now, I'm trying to work out numbers for everything. Once I get that filled in, then I can import it back into the new software, and it'll give you this expense budget worksheet with the new numbers in it. But I'm not sure if I can actually change those numbers once I import it in here. I'm still trying to work that out, and their instructions for this aren't very clear. So I am working on this, and hopefully next week I'll be able to give you something that you'll be able to look at before we get together for another meeting and go through this. But.
So today our main focus is to kinda go down through the departments and give you the more critical areas of decrease or increase of what our projects are this year. And so what I did, I asked Jeff Dunn to come, only because he's got the street department and solid ways sews and drains, parks, I don't know, what am I forgetting?
Utility maintenance.
Utility maintenance, pool. So what I wanna do is skip to those. So on the white sheets that Tommy copies of, if you actually go to page three, which that's where the streets, and well, we'll start with the traffic lights, actually. Then, one other side note, the airport will be here with CMT consultants on the theft, I do believe, right, is maybe?
Yes.
And they're gonna go over all the airport grants and stuff for next year. So we have it in here already, but I'm gonna let them explain that to you, 'cause most of all of it's ninety, ten, ninety-five and five, ninety percent, five percent, five percent. So we only know five percent of all the projects. So if we wanna start under traffic light maintenance, Jeff, if you wanna talk about your improvement line that you can see, and this is out of the meeting fund?
Sure.
Jeff's gonna kinda over kinda what we put in the budget and see what you guys think about that.
Well, we did, we picked some intersections that we've had maintenance issues with, as far as the lights keep on sagging downward. We've had ADP involved, the other companies involved, that's trying to pull back the wood poles in some cases, and we can't, basically can't pull on them anymore. So we'd like to go to metal poles in those areas and put a new, like Hockley Avenue, Lucas and East, the school crosswalk is basically issues with the crosswalk issues with the control box, and plus the light cables are hanging down low. We'd like to go in there and brace that back up, put metal poles in, so basically you don't have them sagging all the time. There's some metal poles in that area now. Then Walnut and Mansfield Street is the other intersection that they, a truck hit it about a month ago, and basically do the same thing there. Try to get these back. We don't have maintenance free, basically. We're not dealing with wood poles all the time. Then throughout the town, we've got some metal poles that's never been painted for years and years, that have old traffic lights. We wanna go in there and paint them black, basically get them blasted, painted, and appearance-wise, make it look better. So that's what that money's about there. Exact numbers is unknown. The estimates basically is all for what it's gonna cost us on Beal Avenue and Merron Road this year. You got a rough idea through that way. Until we get into it, engineering and all that, I don't have a good number.
The question, and I guess as far as the meeting fund is concerned, how much money's in there? Do we have enough money to cover this, or will we have enough to cover this?
Oh, yes, we have enough money to cover this.
Last I knew, it was six hundred and something.
Yeah.
Six thousand.
Okay.
It's very specific what we can use that fund for.
Yeah.
Yeah, we currently have six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in that fund.
We're getting about sixty here, right, Joyce?
Yeah.
So I got one, I got one question. Last year, I think, I was thinking it was the last two years, but maybe we just rolled it over to one year. He, they were gonna do something with the lights, and then we ran into a problem that the relay was not compat, he was gonna go in and have all the lights where you could control them.
Yes. Once we talked to our Baldwin sellers, our traffic people, our equipment was so old, he told us it was better off to spend the money to update your equipment first before you even tried to do that.
So that's where, that money that we allocated?
So we did do some of the upgrades in the cabinets and stuff, and got newer equipment in there at a lesser amount of money, but we haven't went back to the timing yet.
I mean, is that still, is that still planned, or is it?
I think it's more down the road, after talking to Baldwin sellers about it. Basically get your equipment up to date, then think about doing that.
Okay. I just wondered, I remember that from the past.
Yeah, I think that was two years ago, yes.
My question for Joyce, I believe. The, if we, if we wanna put, like, the lights up there for the pedestrians, can we use this money for that or not? Like there at the, on Walnut Street by the courthouse, O'Brien Jaff Toffs and Family Services, down by the Lane Street Field, can we use this money to do that?
For crosswalk lights?
Yes. Crosswalk lights, yes. Can you get an answer for it?
Possibly, I can find out. It may be something, I mean, since we're doing money holes and that kinda thing, we may be able to, otherwise it would have to be street, but.
Yeah. If you're shocked, I'd appreciate that, okay?
I would, Dan, just so you know, in August of nineteen, we still had, basically, a hundred and seven, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand still left in that one eighty-five. So we didn't use it to, since they didn't go, we get upgraded, so it's still.
Yeah, I just wondered if it's.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you knew it wasn't there, I mean, it was still there.
I guess that was my question, yeah. Is it still there waiting?
Yeah.
It's fine, as long as it takes, as long as it takes.
Any other questions on the lights, the poles?
Are we doing, is it in one of the projects to do the intersection up there at Irving and Norson Dusky?
No, that's part of that ODOT project.
That's part of the ODOT project, okay. I didn't know if that was a.
There's a delay, there's a delay in that right now because of cabinets and poles. There's a delay in getting, receiving them. So they're looking probably March of next year, is what they're telling me.
And is that also for South?
Beal Avenue, yes, same thing.
Merron Avenue. But those are ODOT projects?
No.
That one isn't?
Beal Avenue's ours, four north is theirs. But it was, both of them's got delays because of the poles and cabinets.
Yeah.
But we already have money allocated for the Beal Avenue one?
Yes.
Okay.
Concrete pads are already there, right?
Yeah, they're waiting, yeah, for about three months now.
Okay, so we're going, get down into the street department, and you can see the highlighted, highlighted first item is the hospitalization, which I know that has to go through Joyce, but I wanted to kinda go over the thought process of the park and the streets. Last year in the park, we had an awful time of hiring people. So my thought process was, was to hire two more full-time people based out of streets and move them into the parks, May first to October thirty-first. So it basically would get split between the streets and the parks, and their schedules would be, one of them would be Sunday through Thursday, and the other one would be Tuesday through Saturday. So the only person I would need would be a part-time person to work till like six or seven in the evening, and I've only gotta hire one or two part-time people to split those hours. Now, I will say, with the general fund the way it is, might be one area that we might just have to go back and hire part-time people and not do that. But that also gives us two more people in the street department in the winter, in case we need them for plowing, et cetera, you know? So it's just a thought, if the general fund, when we get done after the second meeting, that cannot afford it, then that'll be an area we'll have to look.
I mean, the parks fund, right?
Parks.
Parks and Rec Fund, you said general.
I'm sorry. Yes, it'd be the Parks and Rec Fund, which is funded by.
Partially by general.
Yeah. So that was our thought there. If somebody else had done an idea that'd help me cover the park, that'd be great, but I think full-time people, they're in that schedule, and that's what they're meaning to work.
Well, I, and I've said this before, but, and it might go along with this, to hire someone that's qualified on that boom, or, 'cause every year you.
Oh, yeah, true.
And then, you know, they use the boom blowing through the summer, then the winter, they come and pop, so, rather than, but just, you can consider that.
Well, yeah, yeah, we can, I'll give Jeff on that.
Because that one year, I don't know, 'cause I drive.
Two years ago.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, you got someone that wasn't real qualified, and I noticed how long it took them, you know, to blow down Beal Avenue, 'cause I was always going down. And now this year, you got a guy with more experience, I think.
Same, yeah, yeah. Two years after, yeah, two years, and he came back.
Yeah, he's just flipping right through it, so. I don't know, it takes a special talent. It takes a talent, I'm sure I could.
Not a way that takes a lot of nerve, too. Outside engineering, we will have some engineering come the fall for whatever projects we do come. The projects for twenty-one under our US EPA agreement, but the other part of that two hundred thousand is milling and paving, and I have the list of streets we have right here. And if we go down a few items, there's, we put a million and seven in next year, and we have no ODOT projects. So somebody's gonna be here for quite a while next year doing milling and paving. So if you review those, and maybe at the next meeting, we got them in the order of importance, certainly, certainly some can change, but that's kinda what we looked at, and we've already got the list of McKeever and Associates. They're gonna be our engineer next year for the milling and paving project. So when he comes back to us and gives us kind of a rough total for footage and square yards and cubic yards and concrete and work, then we'll get an idea of where we're at with that one point seven.
One of the reasons we're being more aggressive is because we're expecting about three hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue from the state because of the gasoline tax, not just next year, but every year.
Okay, I see you have on your North Poplar and Mary Street Bridge, no dollar now.
What, we're still working with grants that are carried on that.
And what did they find out?
Well, they're working with Jason Long at the engineering at the county to see what all repairs they gotta do. So them two are still working together to figure that out, that's why there's no cost or anything in there yet.
Did that bridge show movement, or?
I haven't heard, I don't know, Jeff, have you heard anything else?
I haven't heard anything.
So.
I'm just curious.
Jeff, on the, or Mayor, on the gas tax, do you know, are those, are those coming quarterly, or, and, like, when do they start coming out?
How does that come in, Joyce? Do you know how that revenue comes in from the state?
It started in July. So we started seeing it, because they're like a month behind when they pay us, so we started seeing it.
So we get a monthly check?
It's a monthly thing? It's a month.
That's great.
It's, it's direct deposit, sort of phase.
So I just thought that wasn't gonna start until next year, but they started collecting it, and then the money gets distributed immediately. Okay, so. I guess there was some confusion with their state legislatures.
That's a surprise.
And if you go down there, we finally worked it out with our concrete pile to get ground up. We split it into this year and next year, and the auditor, state auditor, was okay with that. So hopefully between forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars we spent this year, and forty-nine thousand, and we spend next year, hopefully to go all ground up. At this point in time, we probably will take a little more concrete, we can send it up to National Light and Stone. So we got that guy lined up, he's coming in, and then I think Jeff Dunn's looking at a scale for the Brian Loder, if I heard that right, and see what kinda cost that is, and then maybe we can sell it for five dollars a ton, or seven dollars a ton on a certain day, or whatever, one time a Saturday, or, and try to recoup some of our money if they clean up three dollars a ton.
So for the kind?
After it's grounded, right?
Yeah.
Oh, so this is just a grain, but this is on the picket away.
That's still ours. No, we, they would be so fortunate to do that for us.
Um, can I, thank you, just ask real quick, Jeff Dunn, did you get a chance to price out with scale and cost yet? Roughly five to six thousand. I just wondered if it'd be just as easy to say X amount of dollars per scoop, and like, you know, and that way you don't have to. Possibility, yes. Maintain another piece of equipment. So, well, this actually folds onto, the front end loader becomes part of it, you can actually get it with a printer too to print out, if you want to ask extra cost, though. What we found out so far is five to six, so looking into it.
And any other questions on the milling and paving project? I will tell you, the other reason not only that new gas tax is, for the last few years, we've been banking some money in that fund in case it didn't pass. So at this point, since it passed, that's why we.
We need to spend.
Increased, increased it to do more streets. And there is the ODOT streets that I'm aware of, are routes coming in and out of town, as far as I know we've done, so.
Are they happy with Hockley Avenue now, and Ninety-Eight ODOT? I mean, they came back and redid parts, right?
I know, Jeff, if you've heard.
Well, ODOT is happy with Hockley, both of them they're happy with. They're turning them over to the city, that's your responsibility now to maintain all the cracks. So Hockley Avenue, I did seal that this year, but Ninety-Eight South did not get done yet. That's an older project, I think it's a sixteen project that needs to be sealed, and there's gonna be some paperwork that needs to be done already, potholes, stuff like that, but the state will not come back and do anything to them. They're happy the way they are, and I'm not happy, but they're happy.
Mr. Frank Hockley, do you have a question?
I have a question for Mr. Wagner. The additional three hundred thousand anticipated from the gas tax, were you guys gonna put a full-time person in the street sweeper for twenty twenty?
We have talked about that, I'm sure that, except the council, if they want us to look at that and do that.
'Cause I, I remember Mr. Mayor said earlier this year that one of his things he'd like to do was see that a full-time person was in that street sweeper with that money.
I'm sure it's a full-time, I think we need to, we need to be out there more often. I think this year we've done a lot better job. We were short last year, we didn't have enough people, and so we've got a better staff this year, and we've done a lot, a lot better job. It shows up more this time, right now, because the leaves get caught in there, so, once the leaves roll down, and then, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get back out there and get this.
Jeff, do you wanna talk about the trucks that you're interested in?
Again, we got some older trucks in a fleet for salting and plowing. One of the things we're lacking is, on the side streets, I have no way to salt them as we're plowing them. So when, when the other trucks get done, they have to basically go over the route and salt it, that somebody already plowed. The plowing gets done quicker, but the salting don't. Instead of getting the full-size trucks, I like to look into some five fifty fours, which is about four to five ton deal capacity for holding salt, and have them on some of the side streets, as we're plowing, they can be salted at the same time. If I buy a single, like an eight-ton truck, you look at a hundred and eighty thousand. Well, if I get two five fifties set up, I'm basically looking at one eighty to one ninety for two of them, then I'm gaining the ability to salt quicker and more areas at one time. So that's what we're looking at this next year for the street department, two different trucks.
Would this replace trucks?
Yes, it would get rid of some of the older trucks out of the fleet, yes.
How old are those trucks, two and a half?
That would be a ninety-six and a ninety, ninety-three.
Okay, just to take one step backwards, Arrowhead didn't get done this year, but it's, that's the money that will be there for next year.
Yeah, it's just rolling over into the OPWC project. And that bounces from July to July, so there's, there's plenty of time for him to get that.
Okay.
Is that a user lose it if we don't get it done by July, or lose the money, or?
Well, you know, I never been done that road, 'cause we've never had that done. All right, we'll go down to the parks, and we already talked a little bit about the parks, hired two full-time people, and, but as you look over to hospitalization, ignore that thirty-seven, I don't know how I did that, but that should be about twelve if, if we have three full-time people in there for six months, but, Jeff, you just ignore that.
Going from fifty to sixty-five on the salary, is that you're changing from part-time to full-time then?
Yes. But then it's gonna change your hospitalization, I guess, and make it, well, Tim was only out there full-time, so, probably make it twenty-four, wouldn't you, Joyce?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so, that's why I said ignore that number, and that was wrong.
Depends on, you know, what type of coverage they have, one of them.
What was the percentage increase on hospitalization for this year over last year?
Six point ninety-five.
Six point ninety-five, okay.
So. I'm sorry, Kelly, did I answer your question?
You did, I have another one, just so I see, I believe the same way you're seeing. Going from what we've done with the part-time to the full-time, your biggest reasoning for that is just because you don't get the people apply?
Well, I get the people that apply, but part of the problem is, I get the kids that are involved in every kinda sport there is, and those are the good kids.
Yeah.
But sports run all summer now. So next thing you know, I'm trying to write a schedule with four kids, I got cross-country here, I got football start here, I got.
So it's likely to make sure we've got the right people in the right place at the right time.
Yeah, I just want somebody out there every day. I got Tim, you know, Monday through Friday, but I was looking to cover on those weekend days, 'cause they work nine to six, and they're there, if anybody needs anything, I can continue to go back and, if we have to hire a part-time, I will, but the last couple of years have just been terrible, and I don't, I don't know what else to do.
And the parks are heavily used?
Yeah. There's some weekends out there, Saturday and Sunday, they're both full. I mean, all the shelters are full, and, we had a guy out of Ontario that, and, we're working on trying to find some grants for some money, but if we had lighting down at the other Field of Dreams, and new lights that we need to replace up above at Allmiller, he'd be here every weekend with a traveling tournament, and he was here, what, four times like you, Kelly? Two weekends, back to back, and he loved it. He said, "If you give me lights on those fields, we'll pack it in every weekend." So it's just, it's a wish list, but they really liked Allmiller Park. The other item on there is, we were getting mulch from Polytech.
Donated.
Donated. But this last set, we actually ended up buying, and so it looks like we're gonna end up purchasing some more mulch, and we gotta get these in for our insurance company from what, Jeff, three, four years ago?
Yes.
We've got the barriers, they just need put in, put down, we gotta get mulch.
This is the artificial mulch, safety mulch.
Yeah.
Curious, how much do we pay them for, I mean, I see it's like sixty-eight thousand, but I mean, is it like a thousand dollars a ton, or?
I don't know what we paid this last time, but I had a colleague, Professor Dusky, that he was, it was ten thousand dollars for.
I understand, I have a purchase over there, but I can't remember where it is. Jeff, do you?
Yeah, we're gonna get it off a galleon, they're ground-up tires, and basically it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, and if I remember right, it's gonna be twenty ton.
Does that do, how much would that, would that do Lyons?
Well, we're so far behind, once you get that far behind, you gotta get back up to the level that you need to be. But I'm trying to match them. The stuff we had got from the old salon down there, we, I'm trying to keep adding Allmiller Park, and where we have the items, so I'm not mixing different type of items, you know? So basically, this load that we're gonna get this week is gonna go out to Lyons Field for that new placate we put in back underneath the Jacobs administration. That's about six inches down below where it should be, and it's gonna take every bit of that just for that area. So it's that far behind. Once you keep up with it, you can dress it up maybe every two years, you know, some gets kicked out, you know, and stuff like that, so we gotta keep adding to it, but if we get everything back where it needs to be, it should be every two years, this kinda routine areas.
You know, we've been behind for years on it. Polytech's been very generous, and wouldn't take any of it. This last year, I know they had some problems with the machinery, and then being busy, and I didn't wanna pay pressure, we offered to buy it, but they're just, they're just, that's not their, the only time they need mulch is to, it's not a business for us, just to help us out, so, if they can't do it, they can't do it, so, we don't wanna pressure.
But they have helped us out, they have helped us out.
Oh, yeah, they've saved the city taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars over the last few years, so.
So, since we're in the parks, and the poles next, what? You know, we had a lot up and down on the pool this year, and, and maybe it's just in my mind, but, you know, we had to switch, we took that money and moved it over here, and then we're gonna replace it, 'cause we switched contractors and whatever. And so in my mind, at that time, I was thinking that we had allocated money for one diving board, that should've left us money for another diving board, is that gonna be a possibility or not?
Joyce, Joyce, I know we're gonna roll over what we had for this low dock, right? And then, we're still not quite finished up with the pool, we're there to the point of wanting to fill it, but I'm not getting into that part. If you wanna ask Mr. Dunn, he's learned more about a pool this year, about where we're at, and I think we're still evaluating the high dive.
Well, I think there's money there for the one meter, which is a low one. The three meter, I think at this time, I just talked to the search director about it last week, I believe we just need to get it sandblasted, 'cause I don't, I'm not aware of any issues with it. I need a sandblast add, and basically see if there's any cracks or anything like that, and go from there. If it's cracked, they basically said I couldn't weld it before, is what they said. So at that time, you would have to change your plans of which way you're gonna go, and that's gonna be it with a new one. So at that time, you would have to change your plans which way you're going to go and that's going to be up with a new one. I think there's, at this time, I'm probably just looking for money to sandblast it and paint it, the three meter.
Do we have the equipment to sandblast it or do we have to send it out?
Well, they'd have to do it on-site. Yeah, it's in the foundation and all that, so they would have to do it on-site.
Well, I would, I mean, just personally myself, I would really like to see that pool, everything back to normal next year, you know. You know.
Can I get it in the mail?
We did. We suffered all year for that and I'd really like to see if we can find that anywhere. And you guys that are going to be here next year when that time comes around, eighteen, not really.
Is that, is that something we should just ask for a estimate on then for, for them to sandblast it, inspect it?
Yes.
Can we ask for that?
Yep. And you're going to carry over the funds for the, the one meter.
We applied for a grant last year for the five meter, but how big is it?
Three and one.
What was it, what's the, what's the total?
That's a three.
Three meter. I don't know, it's like cliff diving on a pole. Anyway, but then, we're going to apply for that again too, so.
Hey, you okay, do you go on to jump stuff to the next department? Okay. Let's go to page six. Sewers and drains. Outside contractors would be the, when Laura McGinnis was here, talked about the flow monitoring. And that's a hundred thousand, so that gets split between storm waters and sewers and drains, so that's what that fifty thousand is for. As you can see, group one, group two, group three, you won't know that in there this year. Our outside engineering.
Group three would probably be.
Well, yeah, three A would still be going in, yes.
That's not going to happen a lot for the first.
Group three A is where?
That's Washington, Jumping Cross, Hopley, that whole B right there.
Okay.
Or triangle, I should say. And then the outside engineering pays part of Arcadius from the US EPA, pardon, US EPA. And we are working on an engineering firm, we're making a lot of our dues here this month during December. Typically, it's every eight, three to five years, you go out to ask for reference for qualifications and send them through. So we haven't done that and mainly because we were in this agreement with the EPA, didn't want to switch right in the middle of the road. So this is a good avenue for us to start looking at maybe someone else or maybe it's still Brent's better, but. We're going to reach out and get some qualifications, so hopefully we'll have that decided by the first of the year. But that engineer will start working on projects for twenty twenty-one, so we had to put a little bit of money in there for that. Jeff, what else is in that, storm water? So again, outside engineering is Arcadius. That was the other. For Arcadius. Yeah, that was an additional fifty thousand and we put twenty-five in there, correct? For anything else who might be down the road in the fall. Yeah, so.
So storm water, you're down from seventy-five thousand to ten thousand dollars because we bought that new equipment last year, is that what it was? Did we buy the?
Yeah, basically in sewers and drains and storm water, we bought new equipment over the last two to three years. And we're to the place right now, we're in good shape. Street, like I said before, street department, maybe two salt trucks, plow trucks, but the other departments like them, I'm not going to ask for new equipment. But I feel we need some money there just in case something would happen.
My other question is, would it be a benefit to put a little more money in there? Is that a problem, Joyce, to carry over, you know, money for, for new equipment purchases rather than when, you know, in three years, five years, when he says, well, I need these four pieces of equipment? And then we're hit with a larger bill, would, would it behoove us to put a little more in there or is that money of your, your process?
Well, sort of, I mean, basically what we don't spend this year just goes into the fund for next year's budget. So, I mean, if you know that it's not going to be touched and can build on it, maybe that would work, you know, from year to year. But in, in these funds, sometimes we've got so many things going on that you can't just hold that money.
Right, I mean, I feel that way about all of our, all of our equipment, especially vehicle-wise. I think the one area that I know that we've got a line is for, for the garbage trucks and I know why that is because of the way we did the, the bills for that. But I think it would be beneficial to try to start doing that for every vehicle we're going to replace. We know what its proposed lifespan is, we know what, what the anticipated cost might be. Be easier to sock a little bit away every year rather than get hit with a hefty bill when something's replaced.
So, so my question was looking at both sewer and drains and storm water. On the outside engineering, we ran, didn't understand what you said, but the one went from thirty thousand to seventy-five thousand, the one went from eight thousand to seventy-five thousand. What was the reasoning behind that?
That was Arcadius' fee for doing what they have to do to get that report ready and then part of what we gotta do to turn into the US EPA two times a year. So they got a whole bullet point list of items. It's in, it's in your packet, that they talk about everything that they have to do and then they break down what their cost is. And we have money rolling over from this year, we got about eighty-eight thousand, I think Joyce said today.
On a purchase.
So we might have eighty thousand of that left, so their estimated cost.
It was like two hundred and thirty.
So we, that was, that left us a hundred and fifty to have to put in the budget.
This is something we didn't do last year.
Well, we did, but we had, we had money that rolled over to pay for it. And now this year, we've only got eighty thousand left to pay for it.
I see you added training and education, those were new lines. Is this, so somebody has to be certified in something, is that what we're going after here?
Yeah, but before we get there, can I, I want to, I want to cover one more thing. And this is under solid waste admin on page six. I want you all to be aware of the rates that we're looking at for the landfill. Look like we're going to be going up another thirty thousand dollars for next year. So I think that's, that's, we're going to have to really look at that and, and Jeff and I have been talking about it and, you know. No matter what you do, you're still going to have the same amount of tonnage, whether you pick up twice a month and then it takes you longer and. So I, I don't know what the answer there is, all I can tell you is if you live out in the country and you're going to have your garbage picked up even twice a month, you're going to pay twenty-five to thirty dollars a month. And we pay, we charge sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighty-five, whatever.
Or ten.
Yeah, or ten. So I think we really need to look at that at the beginning of next year. So I probably need to get it referred and I, I know we felt a lot of grief about it, but. When you get Joyce's next up budget sheet, there's only like six or seven items in the solid waste department for expenses. So there's not, you know, many places you can cut to fund that department, so.
The biggest expense is the landfill.
Yeah.
We're still operating under the same rules that as long as they have debt on that landfill out there, they can, we cannot take our trash anywhere else. It has to stay within the county, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we can't take our stuff anywhere else, either from the city of Galleon, anybody that picks up in Galleon or whatnot, it has to stay in the, in the county.
And then Sis, you just asked about.
Training and education.
Yeah, under utility maintenance, storm water.
Both.
Storm water and sewers and drains.
Yeah, but there aren't.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars each.
That's what you asked.
I didn't know if we had to have somebody certified for something, Jeff?
Yeah, there's, sewers and drains, there's Brian Schuster holds a license that he has to keep up to date. So these, I don't believe there's anything in these two lines before, so we added them this year, so it'd be something there to pay him, pay for education out of.
Okay.
And plus, if another employee would want to step up and get a license also, there could be money there for that too.
Okay.
All right, then, I'm sorry, let's go back to page two. It's feasible, we sure would like to send our maintenance there to get, get to be a certified electrician. So any projects that are done around town, he can approve, rather than waiting, whether it's projects we do, maybe the Bratwurst Festival did or. And it, and its cost is three thousand dollars.
Can you guess what that would save you a year?
I am, I.
It's going to be more than three thousand dollars.
One job would save us.
Good example, I'd use Keith Selectric to help us out in a situation like that. It's anywhere from six hundred to a thousand dollars for one project, depending what size it is. Just to have Kim come out and oversee it, take care of regional county force.
That guy's in over there.
Yeah.
And that's a one-time expense, one year, so.
Go away in twenty twenty.
They'll still need continuing education.
Continuing education, yes.
Is there any negotiability on the landfill rates?
It is what it is, it's the same goes, it's like they.
Commissioners have a contract with that.
I hear something.
No.
Okay.
No, they're saying that, you know, they'll have it paid off, they'll have it paid off, but now since they went and have it under a new contract with a new person now. Now they're building that, well, another sit-down.
Definitely not getting any smaller out there. People in, smelling the breeze.
They increased the maximum, maximum daily intake by, I think they doubled the damage that, that their lot bring in daily from outside the cabin, so it's going to fill it fast.
The only way we're going to decrease tonnages is to start a recycling program, which is a money loser. So it's, it's, I mean, it's going to be worse if we, I mean, it's, I'd love to do recycling, we looked into it, it's just going to cost us several hundred thousand. Nobody wants to recycle anymore.
Everybody uses the trailers, that's for sure.
Well, the processing. We were there at that last meeting, they had the solid waste and they're looking at an alternative that I think will be, help everybody, so. But with that, Jeff, I'd like to, if they do come through with that, I'd like to make, you know, we were talking about, what they were talking about was large dumpsters and used to everything. And I would like the, the city to look for a spot to, to put these, you know. So, because we can't keep them back here and we can't do them at where they are now, it's going to have to be on concrete and.
Yeah, there's some.
What, five yards or something?
Yeah, I think it was something like that, but then they, they, I don't think they need it fenced in, do they, or three-sided maybe? I don't remember, they didn't get into all the particulars, but it was, it was a whole different way to do recyclables, so.
They're looking at estimates and contractors that do that, basically they bring a big dumpster in, you just bring all your recyclables, dump them in there and then they start and pick them up.
Ohio State.
Yeah, and there's several, Tiffin, Tiffin does it.
And that was just what, about two months ago we met?
Yeah.
Month ago, we met and I know the county commissioners are looking at it and we won't get into the rest of the discussion, but.
No, no, but I think it would help, it's, have these trailers sitting here and, and it would be plenty of opportunity to get people to get rid of that stuff. And then we get credit for that, what we, we get credit for that.
And what we'll put in.
Yeah, so that's what we're after, you know. Go ahead.
Also, you know, like I know up at Holy Trinity, every other month, they have a semi up there and they do cardboard and paper and stuff like that. Is there any way, or would it be that we could even advertise that on our city website and, and other places that, I mean. Because it's actually helping us if it gets recycled. I'd go out and steal cardboard from my next-door neighbor and he doesn't care. But I keep it then and take it up every month then up there to be recycled. And I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, that there isn't something that we can do to, to also, I mean, and I know we're not the only ones that do this. Because they do this, I think, sometimes at school and I think there are a couple other churches that may do something like this, but. I think, you know, to make everybody aware of, you know, if you're not aware of it, you're never going to do anything.
We, you know, was on the access channel, I was going to sit down on there, we had the announcements. I know the last few times, that's been pretty full. The only thing they could do is extend the timeline or, or do it every month, Holy Trinity.
Yeah, I know, they had, they had so much stuff in there last time, but it was some, somebody was bringing some stuff in and they had to go through it. And I mean, they had binders and everything else in it and there were like six guys up there that spent like six hours going through all that and getting all the metal out and getting staples out, the clips. You know, big, those big black clips, they got a whole box full of those.
Oh, they, yeah, you're talking about the shredders?
No, the ones that work in there at Holy Trinity, yeah, the guys that were doing stand, Stan said he was there for like four and a half hours doing it.
The issue is, well, the big issue with recyclables is it does, you know, there's not a one of them anymore you'd make any money on. But that's, they used to get several thousand dollars for a truck now, now they get six hundred bucks. And so there isn't a whole lot of incentive except to be environmentally friendly. And that's the issue with the landfill too, it's, the more, the more recycling you do, the more, more cost you.
We're next.
Well, Jeff, you got anything else you want to add?
Nope, that should be it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for cleaning up some dust this morning too.
I got that messy, right when we started to do it.
Oh, did you?
Thank you.
Police Department, we just had some radio.
Page one?
Page one, sorry. For second, two items, radio, communication equipment, UEP, he needs two-phase radios and some GIS, it's going to run about thirty thousand. That, that was, and the other thing that probably changed this a little bit in the police department, and I know we weren't going to go line by line, but. The JPO maintenance is, we're now waiting a couple years, you know, and really going to have to spend a little more money on maintenance on the rest of the automobiles we have, so. Hopefully they won't need too much, but we did raise that. Down in Fire Department, outside contracts, you have a list in your packet of showing the items. And that's all part of what is under the outside contracts that test it and the alert. So if you look down through those sheets and, and the fire levy fund, they've got some things that they want to purchase out of there. So when we get to the fire safety levy, that, that's where that would come out of that.
Is that the EMS supplies you want out of the fire levy fund?
Well, under the new equipment, we don't know what kind of payment, so we have to decide where, what that payment will be and when it will start. So that might come out or we have to decide where we're going to get the money from and how we're going to pay it back, so. I just threw that number in there to make sure that we talk about it and you don't forget it. EMS supplies as some of the issues we're going through right now with EMS. We're, we're working on an agreement with them to try to help them through the middle of the night, maybe to help them save some expense. We don't know yet for sure, but they, they. We don't know yet for sure, but they, they legally, I guess I refer to Rob, if they could donate us a truck, then we're gonna have to have supplies for that truck. So we might have to look at that three thousand and see where we're gonna increase that.
Kevin, if you want to.
You wanna say if you're talking about equipping and ambulance?
Yeah.
Not even Rob.
No, I know, but we need to add to it.
Yeah, you're probably looking at more like forty-five thousand.
Wow.
You look at heart monitor and all the other stuff.
But we'll need to know, when we figure out what we're doing there.
Right.
We'll, we'll have to look at probably the fire levy fund to get some of this equipment.
Right.
And of course, the other outside contracts is the fire levy, and that's, if you look at the list, you know, there's.
That's the safety forces levy.
Correct. That's a two oh two number.
Yeah.
And that's his turnout near quarterly blankets, mark system. We gotta pay a medical director retainer.
What page do you look at now? I lost. Page one?
I'm just on page one, but I'm looking at this paper right here that's got.
Gotcha.
Okay. Sorry. So that's a little list of stuff that needs to come out of that.
What is the balance in the fire levy right now?
This was as of today. Twenty. Eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, thank you.
And I see, any other questions, Rob?
Do we have any grants lined up for any of this stuff or not this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
I do know they're constantly applying for them, but.
We got, I forget which individual in-house, Jeremy and.
There's two of them, Jeremy and.
Jeremy and. Rob. There's two of them that have been writing our grants, so they're doing a really good job, so.
Jeff, if I could ask the same question I asked Jeff a minute ago, police cars, police vehicles. When are we gonna anticipate starting to need to replace some of the ones that we got here in the last couple years?
Well, I would think, I think in fourteen, we started getting like two a year. I would think we would be coming up, if we were wanting to get any value out of what we are gonna trade in, we'd wanna do it soon.
How do I ask there if we need to consider what you're doing this year to look at?
Well, with, with doing the, the truck, I didn't know if this would be the right year to do that. I know there's never a right year.
And I don't wanna stand up in a situation where we were when, when we were piecing cars together and buying used police cars just to get by, you know.
Right.
If it's something we're gonna need to look at, we ought to be honest with ourselves and look at it.
I think that as we've gotten these newer ones, we've got the mileage down and patrol, we're. You know, I don't think we're putting the miles on each vehicle, because it used to be where one person would get out, the next person would get in. And, and a lot of those then are only on one shift, but you can.
Exactly.
So I think we've kept the miles down, which will hopefully help maintain the value in the mileage, so. But you're right, sooner or later, we're gonna have to get on the cycle.
We're looking at it.
I got one, not, not looking at any staff increase in the fire department or. Are we moving towards an ambulance service or? It's been a year now since we had the last discussion, so I don't know.
Well, well, we, we have talked about giving the test here in January, so we have a list. But right now, we're going through the issues with Fort Smith and EMS and. Kevin, you can jump in here anytime, or just to explain kind of where we're at, trying to help them get through the next two years or the next year, whatever we're gonna do, but.
Talks are ongoing.
Yeah.
It's probably the easiest. Yeah, there is, there is a lot being talked about.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, a year ago, we were ready to jump out of it, so. And I think we all, as councils, said, no, let's give, let's stay in it for three years. Through that time, let's come up with a plan.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things that we are working actively towards. We've met several times over the last couple weeks. We've got a meeting scheduled again next week, too. So it is being talked about, working on.
Okay. All right, we'll jump down to general admin where it says website, website, email hosting. We have that coming up on a contract, but I guess Kelly would have been more the one to talk to you about it, but we had to put a little money in that fund. And I think my computer is still running on Windows seven, which I guess is becoming obsolete. So, thank God you're not talking to a computer guru, but it was fine for me, but I guess we need to replace it, so. Under the law director, Rob, if you just wanna touch base with that just for a second of why we need to increase that?
Yeah, we, we have, we've been speaking with some outside engineering firms to resolve some issues. And as those guys continue to review things and recommend solutions to us, that, that's where we're incurring that cost. We hope that down the road, we'll be able to recover those costs, but right now on the upfront, we're gonna have to incur them. And those are, have already been fairly helpful, I think, in what they have come up with so far. So that's, that's where that, that's at right now.
Yeah, I know we're looking at a high-level overview today on this, but, and I think we're just looking at major changes. But you anticipate having the same dollar amount next year for your demolitions?
I'll take as much as you give me, quite frankly. Yeah, no, I, I think the one big project that's, that's definitely gonna be on our radar this year, we, we didn't do it last year, and that is the area behind Kroger's. That's, that's gotta be looked at. We know what the estimates are. And we know the asbestos issue with the, with the one part of that. The question would become if maybe we acquired the property first, how much could our city crews do, not the non-asbestos properties, part of that. Property can be acquired, you know, inexpensively. So, th- those are all things we have to look at, but that is, that's a major issue in the community right now, that property. But we have plenty of others, so, you know, we wanna try to be as judicious with that as we can. Obviously, the four we did this year will levy against the property taxes on those. One of, two of those are buildable lots. One's actually very nice, a lot up on the north end. But we're not gonna recover the whole amounts back, and they already are way behind in taxes, so we'll get a little bit back, not much.
The Kroger property, if we acquire that, can we be, can we get brownfield grants?
Yeah, definitely something to look into at that point in time. There's, there's a lot of issues with that property, you know, and, and so, you know, because of floodplain and historic uses and, and just all kinds of things. And we do know about the asbestos on the front building, so that's gonna have to be dealt with. But the other two buildings were clear, and there's not a whole lot, you know, would take a whole lot for, to knock them down. So, yeah, I, I think we're gonna come a lot lower than what we think.
What if we acquired it, knocked down the ones that don't have asbestos, and somehow accidentally knocked down the other ones?
What do you think the fine would be?
We'll send them to find you. That's a thought.
It's not so much the fine with the criminal penalties.
The firewall estimate.
Yeah, it's not so much the fine as it's the criminal penalties, and, and there are, there are potential uses for some of that, both, you know, parks and parking and Kroger, you know, that. Squeezes getting their deliveries in there, so there's a lot of things, if that property was clean and usable, there's a lot of things, and that's one where we may recover some of our assets from, and if, and frankly, whatever the budget you fund my office, on January second, we're, we're gonna start working on that project.
Oh. Are we up on revenues on income tax levies? I mean, are we percentage higher than where we were anticipated to be?
Yes. Three to four percent at this point.
At least it's not the other direction.
One last question on the Kroger property, we'll move on from that kind of sidebar, but any participation from Kroger on that project, or?
I think once it's cleared and saleable. I think, I think there's a potential for a buyer. But.
So maybe some recovery after we do all the.
Yeah, you know, and trying to, on the front end, you know, when you say the A word, because everybody runs away from it. And the A word exists, we're gonna have to deal with it, and it's, it's gonna fall to us now, or when those, that current property owners pass on. So better now than later, I suppose.
Go to page two. The airport, they'll be here on the fifth to go over their projects. And then, did you have an attached list of what they'd like to do, so you can have a look at that? And then Kevin and Greg will be, Greg will be here from CMT, and they'll go over those projects. Council, I think Todd's computers, that's it, is that right? That's what I was saying.
Quick question on the airport. Are those projections of our portion of projects that they have, where we, I mean, a lot of these airport projects have been like ninety, ten?
Yeah, like fifteen thousand, those are like our ten percent potentially.
Yeah, these, those, I mean, are our costs.
State does five, we.
I knew it was a high percentage elsewhere, and then FA does ninety.
And they keep up on that pretty, pretty well. Kevin does a really good job with that, yeah.
You have a sheet, Agent Volker, that it blunts it out, okay. Like I said, Todd, he's, he's on Windows seven, and we get down to zoning. We did increase training and education, like to get landed more involved with the floodplain planning and planning the GIS software, which is also part of doing all the EPA updates. And we got layers of software now and mapping that shows where our manholes are, our storm drains, our water valves. I mean, it just goes on and on, and we got maps now for people that need to go plow a street, they got it in their truck, they know where they're going. So this is layer upon, layer upon layer, and this is a great cost savings to who we were paying for before, but Jeff's department loves it, John loves it, so it's a great addition when they're out looking for a water valve two foot of snow. They got a good idea of where it's at, so. And then he also needs his computers on Windows seven also. Moving down to land and buildings, outside engineering. I know you all seen the cost estimate from Brad Stetter Carroll. We do have another quote from another engineering firm that if I gave it to you, you'd all pay. So we're working with them right now to set up a meeting. Cost was a great saving, so at this point, the NEF just had the engineering, the items we need done for ODNR. We put fifteen thousand in there for that. To finish up City Hall for the chiller and heating, I should have went and jumped on over that when he was here. We still wanna keep twenty thousand in there for that. And then the net maintenance, which could come out of stormwater if we have to, we just need to put it in the budget somewhere. And we're hoping if we can drop that down below a certain depth, we could fall off of ODNR's radar, and I think we can do the work ourselves. And that's basically lowering the spillway and putting a riprap in to let it drain if it gets so high, and it'll never get deep enough to fall under ODNR. Land and building improvements. We have some improvements out of the wastewater treatment plant, which could come out of that fund. We just wanted to make sure we accounted for it, so you might see it move. The fire department roof needs replaced. We've had two or three people look at it, got a good estimate, so. The airport parking lot, it's roaches. Kevin asked if we could do that out of land and buildings. We would like to start repainting the trash cans downtown that are steel. So we wanted to start getting those painted before they get too bad. We wanted to power wash the ambulance building, but it also needs the steel block joints mortared or caulked or, after we get that done. And we have some carryover money for the art part for graffiti coating. Oh, and eight new lights at the square. I think we're gonna try to match them up.
They're a little bit smaller than the downtown. But they look the same.
And I can have Jeff come in and go over, these are some of the things that he was looking at doing, and I should have had him over when he was here. Where we're slowly getting our buildings back in shape and where they need to be.
What are we looking at needing done here on the chiller and heating? I thought that was all done last year.
I think this is the, I, I have to. Yeah, there's, this miscellaneous items that need done, so I can get a more detailed list for you, so.
Twenty was just to cover that. I don't necessarily think it's gonna cost twenty, or?
I'd have to get with you on that. We, we can, we can get it.
We, we, first, for the first time, the actual thermostats work, so we can actually control the temperature pretty well in other room. And that, that really, long-term pays for itself.
So, any other questions on those? Okay, we'll move over to.
Well, moving to page, I was.
Okay.
Based on public health, I think we're, I think we're due this year. A new contract with the health department? I was thinking this year.
The paperwork.
Yeah, I'm on the board at the same time, but that was earlier in this Christmas.
They, they usually in the past, when they've done a contract, it's, it's been, it basically remains right about the same. It hasn't fluctuated, I don't think a lot.
It didn't, it didn't change from the paperwork that I got, we're budgeting the same amount for this year.
Did you get some this year? Okay, okay, cool. All I know was when we looked at that in the screen, you know, you know, to get those numbers to jive, and it was like partially, a whole lot, and they, and they.
Well, everyone's wet way out.
And I think we, they make a good offer somehow, you know.
Well, they take good advantage out there of those federal programs, they're just healthy brother.
It's almost totally funded on grants.
Yes, they, they do an excellent job.
But you'll see the ambulance district under public health went up.
Yeah.
Which we knew was going.
Yep, and it's gonna go up next year after that.
Yeah.
His, his, his three-year contract was increased each of the three years.
Okay, this is our second of a third year of a three-year.
We started our second year on November one.
Do you pay that in advance, or do you pay that monthly, or do you pay it quarterly?
We pay it quarterly. They just brought me the bill in for the first quarter of twenty twenty today. That's where I got my number to plug in here, but I told him he's not gonna get it till the first week of January, because it's in next year's budget, and I don't have it at this point. So, he was okay with that, as long as he didn't have to wait, you know, until the end of the month or something.
Okay, we'll flip on actually to page four. In the waterwork in the plant. We just highlighted joints over there for the salary line for that hospitalization, and we are, looks like we are gonna have a retirement. Um, we just highlighted Joyce over there for the salary line, uh, for that hospitalization, and we are, looks like we are gonna have a retirement at the end of next year. Bill Love has decided that he thinks he's gonna retire, but he'll give me a letter, but right now that's his plan. So we do have a water plant list, uh, people we've interviewed. In order to have one ready to go, we feel we need to hire them in March, so they get six months to get their certification. And then Bill will probably leave in August to use vacation and personal days. So that way we'll have someone to roll into his spot, so we won't run into overtime. So we'll have to, um, that number could not have exact, we might have to come back and ask for it, only because Bill won't know what he's doing until the asking contract is decided. Because if anything changes in there on what he's gonna get, not get, that could determine when he leaves, so. Outside engineering was just miscellaneous, we put ten thousand in there. And then the other outside engineering that doesn't have the number, I mean, we could actually add to the other one, but, uh, there's ODNR, and we have a meeting coming up here in December, uh, with another company, and we'll see what we think about them. And they have been in contact, in contact with ODNR to do the work that they want done. So hopefully, we put the hundred and thirty, I might come back to you if we can find out before the next meeting, and I might tell you it's changed, which we're hoping we're gonna be around the forty to fifty thousand dollar mark. So we're working with them right now, um, we're hoping that kinda looks that way, but we haven't met with them yet. Outside contracts, um, is Alaway lab, some testing we have to send out, the boom cleaning, maintenance contracts, uh, power system, geothermal. And then you see the last item, just the water tower maintenance program. And that's an attachment if you look. We've talked about this about three or four years ago, and two years ago with Ed Spriggs. And now we're to the point in the next five to six years, both towers are gonna need painted. And you're probably looking at close to a million dollars for those, according to what they've seen estimates here this year? Over ten? Yeah. No, what tower? Six.
What's the answer to the last?
Exterior of the. In the first six years, both of our towers will be done, and we can, we can change and go off to a different program. But right now it gets us on the maintenance program for the next six years.
And that was a good painting, isn't it?
Says exterior undercoat.
Oh, I see that.
See it?
Okay.
Yeah, on both of them. So we can cancel that program anytime we want, um, but we do have to have it both done unless this gets availability, just spreading out over the next six years. I, I, Ed did a great job for us on inspections, and I wouldn't be opposed to even using right after that, but, you know, to spread it out over six years is gonna be better than trying to walk in here and one year and say, I need five hundred grand to get a tower. So kinda review that, and think of any questions you have for the next meeting.
You're talking about the lagoon cleaning, you're talking about the new lagoons there, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, where are we with the old lagoons?
We're done.
We're done, everything's finished.
All the dirt's moved and cleaned up.
All the holes filled up.
Yep, yep, they're all done. Final payment was what, last week?
Okay.
We finally got the check.
We still have a bill from Alan Exavating.
They can't get ahold of you.
Now, I, I did have a call, no, wait, I think it's been two weeks ago now, uh, from, uh, Ms. Miller, because they were doing their certified payroll reports for them that have to be turned in with their bill, I guess. And that's why they were working on it, but it's like, why are you waiting till now? They've been, they've had it down. I'd like to have that cleared out before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Is that nice for listening to me, yeah?
The, the new line, it says propane, is that just coming out of another line, did you create the line just now, or?
Well, that, a- as we are still going through some issues at the water plant, um, and part of it's the heating system. Uh, last year we were heating with diesel fuel, and this year, well, we're gonna go ahead and install some propane heat, so we don't run into the what-if for that, and, uh, so we're looking at like four months of propane in case we need it. It, it's a backup precautionary. We are getting installed, we've had a couple pumps replaced, been working with Jones and Henry, and we're trying to get to the bottom of it. And, uh, this is a precautionary, so. And since you're right down here at the bottom, I, I think Chad would like a desktop computer and a copier out there.
I thought they had a copier out there. I know they had a copier out there.
He was saying that it's not, um, producing good copies anymore. So I think we have some people contact.
We'll look more into that, too.
I know it was in the bid for the cop, for a copier that was in there, it was a bigger copier, too. It wasn't a, it wasn't a, the My Sis's House kind of copier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's wrong with it.
Okay.
Um, we go to page five. We've got Miami Waterline Expansion Program in there. And that's a handout that we gave you from Lynn Kiefer when you did the estimate. So we've got the OPWC grant there of a hundred and eighty-five, total project is five eighty-two, so that leaves us at three ninety-seven. Um, I, I will say also, uh, we're getting ready to mail out letters to Spencer Road and Sulphur Springs again, to see if we have any interest, uh, it's on my desk, just got proofread it, get it on letterhead, and we'll get that sent out. And it does kinda specify, you know, we need so many people to, to do the project, or we can't afford to do it for the return on investment, so. We didn't put that anywhere in the budget, that would be something we'll just come back and talk to council about. John Ernstberger is, uh, gonna get me rough ballpark, but I think if I remember right, depending how far we go on Spencer Road, you were probably looking at four or five hundred thousand, uh, depending how much you did in Sulphur, it's probably gonna be pushing seven, eight hundred thousand. So, uh, we're, we're gonna have to, have to few people sign up for that, we just can't go there, but we are getting ready to mail them out, I just wanted to let you know.
Are you going to Stephanie Drive?
Yes.
Are you gonna come in from the other water line, or are you gonna go down Spencer?
I, I think it all depends, our plan is down Spencer, but it, it all depends how much interest we get off of Archer Road. Because there's like seventeen homes back in there. And that, that's gonna be a heck of a board job to go down Archer Road, I'll tell you that. Yeah, over and down the other side, but they can do it, it's all computer driven, so. But we will see, we'll just see what kind of response we get, and then I'll bring it back to council and let you guys know.
But when you said, you could go down home drive, too, can, can you get to Stephanie Drive for home drive?
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah.
But we can't get right away through the farmer's field.
Yeah, you're out there field there. Yeah, that might not be so easy to get. Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's the hard part.
Never know what you ask.
And outside engineering, that just includes Arcadia's share and some other engineering if we are gonna need it in distribution. I already talked about sewage disposal, so if we go to page six.
Can we, uh, here just to show, uh, CSO six, how are we, or is it fixed?
I guess that's in anyway.
I'd fix it right there.
Already, um, they, they got the, the north line done, going to CSO six. Now they're working on east line, and they're hoping to be done by this day. So. And then I guess the next thing would be, when, Joyce, when do you think you'll be ready to have, uh, through your software and?
If they give that to me, um. Have to look at the calendar. Running to doctors, getting procedures, doing everything else.
So we have council meeting on the third and the fifth. Yeah. So we probably don't wanna go too much past that week.
No, because we are gonna pass this from here, right?
Oh, no, you have.
I see if I can get, uh.
Well, we can let Todd know, and let him know, can't we?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, if I can, I'll try to have the, the worksheet done that I can maybe hand out to unite, and then we can decide, you know, that way he can look a break, formulate questions, and then we could decide when we can get together, uh, from there. I know we got committee meetings on Thursday, I don't know if you wanna throw this into the mix. I'm gonna have probably a bunch of stuff for this year to finish up.
We could go into a finance just meeting for, at the end of it, for just the budget, if we had to on the fifth. Does that work, well, everybody else already has it in their, in their planner, I hope. Okay, we'll see. We'll look and see if we can get a, the new report, complete report on the third, I'll try. Yeah. Thank you.
I did have one more item, I'm sorry, on page five. Sewage disposal is, um, we need some new equipment out of the wastewater plant, and, um, he needs a raw flow of air, our unit pumps, and he's looking at either a new or a new pickup truck. And then, uh, you can see the new line need to add, uh, I think this year we pay off our note, is that right, Joyce?
Yeah.
And then we'd like to start putting three hundred thousand back for the next three years, because the building that we need to replace, um, is the equipment building, the operating equipment, and the equipment alone in size is gonna be about five hundred thousand, and then it's gonna hire the people to put it in. So we can just start like to save on the money now, whether it's four years now or five, uh, but it's getting near its longevity. So too much in me to make sure that we pass that on, and if you want. If you come at the next meeting and get into more detail, I can do that, uh, if you can.
He still needs his, uh. Yeah, his UV that's not gonna go into next year, too, right?
Well, we're gonna roll, Lynn, Lynn is supposed to be put that good together. But like, I know the last I knew, they were arguing back and forth with EPA about whether it's a replacement item, whether it had to go out the bid or not. And then he was trying to work with the companies that, if it's a replacement item, the people that we typically get about, but we could get it through that. So I'll have to check and see where we're at with that.
Is that the UV that we put money in twice in the last one piece of the last two years?
Yeah, this is, we started this process two years ago, because it was gonna cost a hundred and eighty-five thousand. So we banked EPO last year and then this year, so we're.
Well, we had put, we had put it in, um, the sewage disposal fund and the sewage replacement fund to get it this year, and that, I don't know what happened with the engineering and why it didn't.
Well, that's what they're, they've been going back and forth with.
Didn't happen.
Two of the manufacturers that make the product.
Yeah, yeah, I heard that, that you're.
Yeah, so Lynn's been trying to pound on the EPA and this company to, uh, make it work as a replacement item, so. I, I will get with him and have the answers on the hand to give you without.
So, Randy, okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say it, uh, as you know, I, most every year I've been against getting the money to the Crawford Partnership, and, uh, we've got some new figures, apparently they're sitting on half a million dollars, and, uh, some of the things I've heard through the engineer, or commissioner's office, I'm, I'm against giving them money again, so you guys handle that however you want.
Well, when we get the next, uh, budget sheet from Joyce, that will be one of the items that you'll have to check about. Yeah.
But I think if it's the money elsewhere, I think we need it elsewhere.
Okay, or is that it?
No, it's not, I guess it wasn't a change.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, thank you.
All right, well.
I need, I need to talk to all of us for a moment.
I, I might need a motion to adjourn.
Did you make it, Kevin, or?
I'd be ready to unless you want to.
Do it.
I will adjourn.
Hey, Kevin, has he got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Would you like to?
My fault!
Gee, Miss Warren, what do you mean to get rid of all this stuff?
You know it, man.